So, count four instead of two.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Woodfin Town Council meeting, Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. It's 5:00. We're glad to see so many smiling faces. Keep it up. First thing we need to do is approve the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at the overall agenda? And is there discussion or motions, or are you ready to approve it? Any concerns with the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, raise a hand? We'll do visual. Okay, thank you. Six, seven. Very good. We appreciate it. Next is the consent agenda, and Shannon's going to talk super briefly about the first two, and then I believe Eric's going to talk about, Council member Edgerton's going to talk about number three.
Yeah, and really, the first two probably don't require a lot of explanation. It's just our, every month, we approve the regular meeting minutes from previous months, those were included in the council's packet. And then, we now are required to report on the tax collection report for the previous period, and so that also is included in your packets. And then, as the mayor has indicated, Resolution 2024-3, I'm going to turn it over to Council Member Edgerton, who helped author that resolution.
Sure. Happy to give a quick background. I'm going to move through this a little quickly, probably do that with everything else that we talked about tonight, not because it's not important, but this is the longest agenda I've seen in at least two years for council. And so, if we're going to try to get staff out at anything close to a reasonable hour, it's going to be incumbent on us to move through. So, this resolution is calling on our members of the General Assembly to introduce and pursue a bill that would alter the state statute governing stormwater utility fees. It would add the municipality of Woodfin to the list of towns and cities that are authorized to add their annual stormwater utility fee to property owner's property tax bills. The reason for this is that for towns like Woodfin that don't have any sort of separate utilities that they bill for, like, we don't bill for our trash pickup services, there's no mechanism to collect that fee other than sending out a single standalone bill. When you do that, you have naturally lower rates of payment. We predicted about 15%. It turned out to be about 14%, the rate of non-payment. And as a result, we had to increase the amount of the fee to account for that expected rate of non-payment. If the bill can be added into property tax where the county manages that for us, and we have a 99.8% collection rate, then we can basically immediately drop the amount of the stormwater fee by 15% without having to change the parameters of our program at all. So, if this can be introduced and passed, that's the practical impact in explaining what I was proposing to members of council to see who might co-sponsor it. It became pretty clear that this has unanimous support, so that's why it's on the consent agenda. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before I ask for a second, I want to thank you for heading this up. It's completely hard to believe that the legislature has, what, 11 various communities in just like an exclusionary club. Is there a second for the resolutions or for the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor, raise a hand, please. Thank you. Every meeting, we invite members of the public to address us on any topic you want to. We'll give you up to three minutes, longer if you tell a really good joke. Did anybody sign up for a public comment? Really, no good jokes, dog. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that didn't sign up that would like to speak on any topic? We'll have public hearings later on the ordinance changes where people will be invited to speak. Okay, if not, open and close public comment at 5:04 and 5:05. We'll now move to presentation reports. We're delighted to have some representatives from beloved Asheville with us, who we've invited to educate us a little bit and help us understand what's going on. Thank you for being here.
Hey, how you doing? My name is Poncho Bermejo. I'm one of the co-directors of Belo Belleville. And like you were saying, I'm very happy to hear then, in two years, this is the biggest agenda that you have, because this means that you care a lot, then the agenda is growing.
I'm Amy Cantrell. I'm also one of the co-directors at Belo. I wish I'd known about the joke thing. See, I could have been better prepared.
Sometimes they have prizes.
But next time, next time, we'll bring a good joke for you.
Thank you.
So, we are here to talk about our deeply affordable housing community that's going up in East Asheville on that model. And before we do, we want to say more, a little bit more about our work overall, in case you don't know about that. Someone let you share more about that.
I really believe then in Belo Belleville. Like, people always ask us, how we can define what is Belo Belleville. And I think, like, when I see the room, I think these rooms are filled always with people and care. So, Belo Belleville is no profit and is full with people and care. Because it's a lot of people and care. We was able to share diapers. We shared, like, almost five million pounds of food in the middle of the pandemic. We did vaccination under the bridges. We did vaccination in trial parts. We did vaccination in, for essential workers at the time in restaurants. In this, in this long walk, or almost 15 years, this walk take us to build houses. And to your question, I remember last time that we talked, and you say, how much land you need? We need all the land that we can find, because we know many people in the community that can't afford to live here no more. I usually say to everybody, then, my fifth language is Spanish. And I used to go to AV Tech. And I remember these days, we used to have meetings, and people, in the meetings, people used to say, we can afford affordable housing. And, you know, being my second language, English, I will try to not translate, only I translate some things. So, deeply, affordable house means in Spanish, like, a house that you can afford, can be the translation. So, when people are saying in the ground, then they can afford affordable house, and means then the world, affordable house, and means anything. So, we create a new term, then is deeply affordable homes, then is houses that people can afford.
So, over the years, we've known more and more people that are struggling with being able to stay in their home, being able to keep a roof over their heads, families, workers, elders. I bet you know somebody that's struggling with housing affordability. It's touching all of our lives, and more and more people are struggling with that every day, people that we love. And so, because of that, we became very passionate about that. And so, we went from, really, people that care about the community and building community with lots and lots of neighbors, to suddenly being housing developers. And that was quite an interesting journey for us to go on. And so, we like to tell people, and now we're speaking to groups all over the country, about what we're doing in this new model, because there's a housing crisis across the nation at this point, and it's touching communities, great and small. I know it's touching Woodfin right now. And so, I'm so glad that Ken invited us, and Shannon was kind enough for us to be here. But what we're telling people is that, you know, we went from knowing zero about how to develop housing, to developing housing and becoming our own general contractor. And so, it's really exciting that people like us, ordinary people like us, who care a lot about people struggling through this housing crisis, can bring a new model about. And so, we say with fresh eyes, we came up with some, some new things. And nobody in our community had ever been able to build what we call deeply affordable housing, housing that, that really touched community. Many of us know that, that community is where it's at. Our folks described it, they said, we want to live around neighbors who we care about and who care about us. So, we said, oh, you want to live in community. And so, we wanted to really build a community as we want. We want to do it sustainably. The number two budget item for folks after housing being number one in their budget is their utility bill. So, building sustainably in the midst of a climate crisis is very important for multiple reasons. And finally, equity. We know that equity helps break the cycle of poverty. And we know that many people are shut out of the lending system. They're not able to build wealth or equity. And we know particularly, people of color often have been systematically shut out of our systems to build wealth or build equity. And so, we know that breaking the cycle of poverty often comes through housing. And if you can attach equity to housing, then you know that you can begin to do that, allow people to lift themselves up. So, this is our four-pillar model. That's what we sought to do. So, we said we have to change up the formula of how you build affordable housing. Do you want to tell people a little bit more about what we're building?
So, we are building, right now, we are building 12 houses. Like Amy was saying, I think then, for us, it's very important to say that we don't know nothing about it when we start. So, this creates a lot of power in the community, because if people then don't know nothing about it, can create something like this. This mean then, together, we can create many, many like this village. And I was saying, we are creating right now 12 houses. In fact, we came today, I was talking with a painter, he was talking already to start painting inside of the houses. We hope to finish by the end of May, have all already, and we hope to have people already inside living in the houses, probably in June. Yeah.
So, it's really exciting. We've had about 1,000 volunteers come out to be a part of this, and also many community leaders that are getting engaged, and many wonderful builders throughout our community. And so, we're so excited to be bringing this model about. This is developed directly by impacted people, who sat in a circle and began to describe what they dreamed of when we look at housing. So, these are residential houses running about 600 square feet each, and they're built on one parcel, which is really a powerful way, we think, to build. It's very affordable. So, if we look at about a five-year survey of everything built in the affordable category, our cost to build is the lowest of any of those in the past five years, which is really incredible. So, we're building now in East Asheville, as Ponte said, we have 12 homes situated like this, built into a village. So, this is a little, little cameo of, of part of the village that you can see there. And we'll take you into the land. This is an acre of bamboo that we, that we were gifted. And we were very excited about one acre of bamboo with a big slope on it. That looks much flatter than it actually is. It's more like this. But you can see, hand cleared mostly by youth and college students.
Yeah, because a lot of the questions that people ask us all the time about the land is, what kind of land? You would like to have a flat land, you would like to have, like, yeah, flat land is the best that you can find. Only, wherever land, like, when people gave us this land, they say, oh, I'm sorry, it's full of bamboo. And we was jumping because we think we have the opportunity to create something that nobody had been able to create here. So, any kind of land is good land.
So, this just gives you a little overall picture. This is the first wall being raised. You'll see there's lots of children there, so we invited the children to come up front, because we believe that we want to raise up new generations, knowing that, that we all deserve home, and to be a part of the solution. And so, you can see, this is sort of what we look like in our really nascent stages.
Probably was, this picture was September last year.
This is what one of the home looks like now. So, this home actually has its paint already on it. But you can see they have nice porches, and most of the homes we're building now are two-story. Some that are very close to our parking have ramps, so we have some space for elders, but that's the back of the community.
I think that many companies then haven't seen what we, what this community haven't able to do. They want to be involved. So, the three first houses, 84 lumber donate all the material for framing, all the windows was donated for Pella Windows.
So, yeah, we've had lots of corporate involvement. You can see here's kids and youth learning. There's a father and son right there that are building together. So, it's been really great to also get kids and youth excited about going into the construction trades. Many of these trades pay over a living wage now, and so, this is a good training ground. You'll see some folks from AARP. We've had four-year-olds to 84-year-olds on our job site, and we're really proud of that. And here's a rendering of what it will look like at the end. And we were invited into the parade of homes, so some of y'all might know, the parade of homes is sort of where builders put their very best homes in. We're excited that some deeply affordable homes, we're invited into parade, because that says we're on the right track. So, you can see, this is the inside of the home. All these homes will come furnished, and look something like this when we finish. This is our one-bedroom model. So, this is in our model.
And this table that you are seeing there, is right now building by the UNC of Asheville. It's a lot of students involved in building all the tables for all the houses?
A home is a gift, and we know that many, many people are seeking that gift right now. And so, you can see some more community members being involved in that build. Lots of amazing construction crews.
Yeah, I guess I can say the story of him, if you return to this one.
Can we go back?
Is there a way to go back?
Yeah. Maybe the other one. The other back arrow. There it goes.
So, this crew is CJ.
CJE.
CJE. So, they came from Tennessee. So, they drive three hours from Tennessee to Asheville to, to do the roof of three houses in one day. So, they, they did for free all the roof, the roof of the houses. And you remember what, when you met him, what he said in the ABC Supplies?
Oh, yeah. So, so he invited, the head of this company invited us to go to ABC Supply to meet with him there. And he took me into the manager's office, and he told the manager, I buy every single that I put on a roof in this place, and I want you to join me, because I'm donating the labor of 12 roofs. And he just stuck his hand out, and Patrick shook his hand. And so, that's how we had 12 roofs donated for this village. So, that's how we create deeply affordable homes, is very much true of what I call the old barn raising, if you remember that, is a really great way to build. And so, that's, that's a lot of the magic that, that we have here as community. So, we're going to go ahead and flip through, and you'll continue to see, these are Warren Wilson students that helped to frame up the first house on their fall break. These are some kids that made some snacks for us when we were building, and they had a good time checking things out. So, we have lots of folks learning, little people picking up drills. Bob there, you see, was a production manager at Disney, and now is eight years old and been working with us. This is one of our crews that's been there for weeks on end now, on delay, their whole crew. And so, you can see into the heart of the village, kind of what's going on. And lots of corporate giving from folks like Lowe's and 84 Lumber, and German Company that makes all the sheathing that goes on the outside of the houses, all that green board you see in construction. We got a whole tractor trailer load from them. Quility, which is a local company, had a team building day. So, we have lots of, of community involvement, as you can kind of see here. This is an important slide, because this is our next-door neighbor. Anybody ever heard of Not in My Backyard? So, we literally are building in their backyard. And we've been really engaged with them and community outreach with all the neighbors to build positive relationships. And they just recently picked out the colors of the houses that are right next to their property. So, we have lots of good relationships there, and lots of good friends helping. So, here's another one of our good friends that's been engaged. So, want to take questions from y'all as we kind of wrap up our presentation. This is what we do a lot there. We get very excited.
These houses are sold or rented to individuals?
So, we have a homeownership model, and we also have a rent equity model. So, we can do either of those things in this model, depending on the land. Oftentimes, land will dictate whether homes can be bought and sold on the public market, things like that. So, we don't have any restrictions on being able to get people equity, which is what's really important to us. So, we have an equity model that uses rental housing, where we also are having people build wealth in their houses through a shared equity plan.
What a wonderful project. How do you, when it comes time for people to apply, whether to own or rent, what criteria, if any, does it first come, first served? How do you select people, tenants?
That's a very, very good question. So, we have a community committee that's in charge of resident selection, based on several criteria. One is income. So, again, we're building deeply affordable homes for folks at 30% to 40% of area median income, because that's where we saw lots of people not get before their homes, right, right there in that gap. So, that's one of the key pieces of that. We'll ask them about their, their housing struggles, whether they face housing insecurity, whether they don't have a home, whether they're an elder. We just got a call from an elder on a fixed income. Her rent went up $300 a month. So, if you're on a fixed income, and you only have a $200 cushion, and your rent overnight goes up $300, you're, you're out of your place, basically. And so, we have a lot of people in that situation, so we want to know kind of what people's housing situation will be. And then, we, we invite them to tell us how they want to contribute as a neighbor in this village, because we'll have a big community component, where we're connecting neighbors very intentionally together. There'll be a neighborhood resident council, so they'll be doing a lot of the, the work together to figure out how, how we're going to live as a community, and how we manage together this collective land. So, we have a lot of green space worked into this village. So, about an acre of land, we have a big chunk of green space where folks can build community gardens, where they can create walking paths, or they can create gathering spaces. So, they get to kind of dream up what that's going to look like and work.
Did you have, did the property have to be rezoned, or was it in a zoning area that you could build like this?
We were very lucky that we didn't have to be rezoned, which is really important. And so, we were able also to, to connect with the city. So, we had some early assistance meetings where we hatched a compromise between building and zoning that allowed for this to happen in a way that had never happened in Asheville, which was really precedent-setting, and we were very excited about that. But we were already zoned correctly, which meant that our neighborhood outreach was voluntary and very critical to us under our value system, because we very much value connections with neighbors and working together. I believe you were part of some of those early conversations. We had people in the room that, that helped us on this journey to get there, where we were looking at, how do we, how do we, you know, work with them, existing confines, to create something that was much needed and had never been done. And so, this is really trailblazing. Like I said, we're getting calls from folks all over the country, all over the region, to, to look at replicating this. And so, we're excited about replication as we go into our second village.
Yeah, we are having people from Virginia Beach that are coming.
Soon, yeah, in May.
What's the approximate cost of a one-story and then also a two-story to build?
Yeah, good question. Good question. So, we, basically, when we were working out all the numbers, we projected kind of a pure cost. What if we had to pay for all the labor, all the materials, water, sewer, grading divided by 12? So, we came up with a magical number of 94,700. So, that's the pure cost. And then, we get to, to play with it even more as people are donating their time and resources, which is really incredible. A two-story does not cost that much more than a one-story, because we're building it up over. So, we already have a roof, for example. So, if you add a story onto that, you're talking about taller lumber. Some of y'all made a price at eight-foot board and 10-foot board at Lowe's or your other home improvement stores. And that, that two foot of extra board doesn't cost very much. So, we're, we're basically building onto something that already is there. And so, it, it really maximizes what we can get within that build. So, it wasn't a big stretch for us. We were actually looking for code changes at the state level that allowed us to do that. So, our model home was only a one-bedroom. By the time we finished that, state building code had changed, and we were able to add that second story and that small footprint of a home. So, that gave us a lot of extra room, and we really wanted to be able to host families at the village, as well as single folks. And so, that allowed us to do that, which we were really excited. So, if you ever want some real fun, you can follow the chatter. If you want to come on building, that's just all public. So, we did that for a while to, to see if we could pursue adding that second floor on.
Thank you.
As you look at next villages, either locally or elsewhere, can you summarize what your, like, the top five things you're going to look for, or the criteria, how you get started?
That's a great question. I love the, the sound of next villages, because we're very excited. We said we didn't come here to do it one and done. We, we really wanted to learn a model that we could then create and replicate. So, we are talking to folks, like, like we said, all over the nation, in terms of replication, and really teaching people a lot of that, and just getting people inspired to do it in their communities, because every community is a little bit different. But then also, you know, our hope is that we can create more villages ourselves here. And so, we are looking for land. This can be scaled up and down, which is really nice. And so, I invite people, as they look to do it in other places, to, to scale to the land that you have. You know, you don't want to, like, kind of supplant an idea on top of the land. So, it's good to, you know, we have parameters, but we also want to build into the land. So, that's what we did with this land, is we said, well, how many houses would this land hold, and what's the best, because of the topography, and what, what gifts does this land already give us? So, this land had a parking lot adjacent that we were able to use, for example. So, that's a lot of what we do, is we look for land. We want to look for land that's zoned correctly and has the ability to do water and sewer amphitheaters. Those are the two biggest pieces when you're looking at sort of viability of a piece of land. And then, in our hopes and dreams, a piece of land is just flat as a flitter. That doesn't happen often. And we say, we've got baptized by fire with this one. So, this one is on quite a bit of a slope. So, we, we know how to build on a slope very well, like little mountain goats, with, and how to remove a lot of bamboo. So, we're guessing that our next piece of land's probably not going to be as challenging as the first, but that's kind of what we look for. So, we can scale up or down, you know, we can scale to five acres, 10 acres, you know, half an acre, depending on what piece of land that we have. And, and we feel like we can build probably a village in about nine months now, knowing what we know.
Yeah, because now we have what we not have when we start, and we have a group of people waiting for the land to start building. We have all the tools, we have all, all the things that we need to start creating it and doing it and doing it. And like the other day, we went to Sherwin-Williams, we are selling it, selling the colors of the houses right now. And somebody came and said, oh, yeah, I haven't seen you two in social media, and I would like to give you my, give you my car, and I want to tell you that Saturday and Sunday, I'm free. I want to volunteer. I have a crew with me of 10 people. So, more and more, we are finding people that want to do it, because you think, I don't know about you, only I love the food of this city. I love to see the gardens. I love to see many different things in this area, and we are losing many of the workers in this area, because they can't afford to live here. I have friends that are living in Marion. I have friends that live in Hendersonville, because they can't afford to live here no more. And also, also, people ask us about the context of, we would like to know the cause, and we would like to know the, all the, all the statistics of all this. And I can tell you, then, the more important part is the why. And why we are doing it is because we are seeing the problem that we are facing here in our community. And I know, when you say about the, the longest, eh, eh, why is that I moved on? The longest thing that you have been having two years. Yeah. I was thinking, like, this talk a lot about how much you care, that you are making longer pages, because you have to solve the problem. And, and this is why we decide to be in all these, like, we, I, I never imagined that I'm going to be building houses, and I think then life pushed us to be in a situation, then we can be helping our community. And I think then you are in a city. Then, many of you decide to be in this city, because you want to do something good. So, we can do it. And this is the problem, like, we don't know nothing about it. So, we don't know nothing about it, and we are doing something about it. Like, you, you didn't have a position of power, you can do big things too.
You nailed it. What's the smallest number that would make sense for you to build? Two houses, 10? Is there a magic number, or would you consider on donated land, anything?
Yeah, I think, I think the, the magic number is, if we can do one, then that means the family has a home, an elder has a home. If we can do 100, let's do 100. That's, that's where we're at. And so, so we know, you know, if there's two here, and 10 here, and 50 here, that's going to start adding up.
Yeah, only like, I can tell you, then, we have big dreams, and we have, like, I was saying, we have many people behind us, or besides us, that are ready to do it. And we are already planning to build 10 in, in the same way that we can frame 10 houses. We have this many people around, and can do it in one week.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Do you want to have a designer or an architect who donated his or her time?
We did, yes. Yes, indeed. And now we have multiple architects that we're working with. So, absolutely. So, we have a lot of professionals that, that step forward to help civil engineers and architects. And that's how we got smart. As Ponte said, we stood right here. We said, show us what you're doing, teach us what you're doing, tell us what you know. So, we have a lot of smart heads at the table, and that's really significant to us going from not knowing anything to becoming housing developers. And we became very passionate about becoming housing developers, such that, like I said, we have our own general contractor's license. We have an unlimited license in the state of North Carolina, because we, we decided we couldn't wait for anybody else, because our, our community needed it. So, we had to become the ones that we've been waiting for. And so, we're very excited. And so we are very excited to be here, and we really appreciate your time and the work that you're doing, and hope that you'll consider how this can be done here in the Woodfin community. It's one of our favorite places. I have twins, so we come to the dragon playground all the time. This is such a lovely community, and there's so many people here that really long for the gift of a home, that they can keep their roots here. So we just invite you to keep in touch with us in any way that you'd like to. And appreciate, Ken, you inviting us and all of you having us here. Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, a quick one. I used to close a few loans in the sweat equity model that have that humanity uses. What kind of legal resources for that and lending resources?
Yeah, so we have a lot, there are a lot of lenders on board. You know, we have a lot of connections with those folks, and also local realtors and lawyers. It's amazing how many people in our community want to make a difference and are looking for channels or ways that make sense, that they can join in something like this. And that's why this effort's been so successful, is it's very collaborative. I mean, it offers people a container to be able to give back, to be able to be a part of building homes, whether you're a builder, or, you know, you're a lawyer, or you're a realtor, or a lender. A lot of times, our systems aren't made always for everybody, but folks in those systems can begin to open the door and shape those systems in new ways to create space for everybody in our community. And so we're excited that we have a lot of those folks on board that are really lending their support and their expertise.
Other comments, questions from council? We really appreciate your time, and congratulations on what you've accomplished.
Have a visit.
Next up is our town manager report by Shannon Tuck, our fabulous town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a hard act.
Yes.
And I'm going to.
That's why I complimented you.
So I'd like to begin our manager's report by just kind of reporting on contracts and more significant purchase orders that have come in the last 30 days. So we've had two, one with U.S. Lawns for a little over $12,000 for park support. So this is landscape maintenance primarily for Silverline Park and Roy Pope Park. As our community gets built out, our public works staff are having to devote more and more time to solid waste collection and street repair. And so it's a little bit harder for them to get to the parks. And we're starting to plan for that moving forward. But for this year, U.S. Lawns is helping us fill the gap. Anchor QEA is an engineering firm who is helping us with the engineering and construction drawings for the Church Street culvert. This is the first of our stormwater inventory improvements. Church Street was in pretty rough shape. It was by far the highest priority on the list. And so we've kind of moved it to the, ahead of the pack, and we're going ahead and tackling that one first separately while we try to figure out, like, a collection of repairs that we'll do, sort of as a single larger contract that will address a number of different parts of our stormwater inventory elsewhere. And then, of course, with administration, we're in budget season, completed our first budget work session, planning our second, which is scheduled for next week. Website updates we're doing, and we're starting to do now as well. And we had our bike pad plan kickoff meeting. For planning and facilities in the planning department, of course, we are looking at our manufactured housing. We have a zoning map and text amendments on tonight's agenda, as well as several conditional zoning applications. We have the rezoning of town-owned property that you all were introduced to as part of the disposal of that Appalachian Way Village property, and that should be coming to you probably in May. Also coming in May is an update to our table of uses. So this is another thing. We hope to do a more comprehensive update of the town's code of ordinances, but this table of uses really can't wait any longer, so we're going to go ahead and move that ahead.
Just a quick question. On Appalachian Way, has that been released to the marketplace, or is that yet to come?
It's yet to come. We are, there is still going to be, trying to remember the process now. We did the resolution to, John, I'm looking.
There's surplus.
Yes. And so we still have a couple more steps for that, including this rezoning. We also, we heard public comment last month about the potential for a tower. We thought it was probably worth reaching out to a tower company just to see if there's anything to that. We have not heard back from that company, so we're going to explore that kind of on the side, too, as we move this along. Moving on to facilities, I think this is the last time I'm going to include anything about the salt shed on a town manager update. The salt shed is complete, I'm happy to say. And it is holding the salt, and everything is good, and we're all very pleased with that. The town hall and community center are also getting some spring maintenance, not just the landscape, but inside. We're looking at some minor to modest repairs that have just been delayed for too long, and it's just time to go ahead and get these things done. We're also looking at the basement renovation to begin in April. We've got our HVAC coming in first, then our framers, and then the electricians. And so we're starting to get all of that scheduled. For stormwater and parks, I mentioned the Church Street culvert earlier. Then I also want to welcome Nate Oblons, our new stormwater administrator. Started this week, and we're excited to have him join our team. We've also had some heavy rain in the last week or so, which has given us the opportunity to get out and do some, what I'm just calling, heavy rain inspections. So in some cases, it might be just checking to make sure erosion control is working and it's in place, and we're not having any issues. Also, looking at stormwater. So we have some culverts and other ditches and things that don't appear to be working properly, but you really don't know until you see them in action. And so when we have a heavy rain event, we have a few of these sites that we go and check, just to see if we can kind of figure out what's going on with the stormwater. We've also managed to clean out eight of our high-priority culverts. So these are what we call our Level Five. This was the highest priority jobs that we had identified in the stormwater assessment and inventory. So we were able to get to eight of those. Then for parks, Riverside, the big news, of course, always Riverside Park in Taylor's Wave. We have our bid opening scheduled for later this week, 2:00 p.m. Very excited about that. So I am looking forward to reporting on that moving forward. We are still hoping to break ground this spring. That is still the plan. It is a moving target. There's a lot of things that have to happen in order for us to enter into a contract and break ground, but that is still our goal. There's a lot of grant work going on right now as well for Riverside Park in Taylor's Wave specifically. We've got one in the works right now. We've got one that we've had some follow-up meetings on and had to supply some follow-up information and documentation. And of course, we're scanning the horizon for some additional ones to consider moving forward. And then lastly, community garden proposal. That went to the PGAC and is actually later on your agenda here, actually shortly. In police, we are moving forward with the Public Safety Interoperability Program. So the agreements have been completed with Buncombe County, or they've been finalized, rather, not yet signed, but will be soon. And then we had the first project implementation kickoff meeting. So this is a very long process. Implementation probably won't occur, probably until sometime in 2025, with completion not to happen probably for another two years after that. So this is a really big project, involves the other, not just Buncombe County, but the other participating municipalities. And so there's going to be a lot of work to do with this moving forward. Of course, recruitment efforts in the police department are ongoing. We've attended several job fairs, some other outreach efforts. Nothing to report on yet, but, you know, sometimes it's just planting the seeds and waiting for the fruits of that labor to come back to you. Also, granted, also looking at grant applications in the police department. Always looking at grant applications. We have restructured our community outreach team with some of the staff turnover and then some renewed interest in some of the community outreach efforts. Our police command staff have been trying to figure out how best to retool that. We have also decided to pull back on the PBL exercise. We were going to use our consultants, bring them in to do a train-the-trainer PBL, where we could then take the folks who participated in that and turn around and be able to train others and do more problem-based learning exercises. So for the time being, until we get better, until we're more staffed up, we're going to just do this sort of scaled-back internal problem-based learning, looking at a specific issue, and tackling that. And I believe it's the career ladder and.
Career ladder, our grade step program and incidents for retention and for level transfers.
And then lastly, internal communications. Chief has been scheduling one-on-one meetings to just individually meet with officers. It's not always easy to do when you have night shift, day shift, and a lot of different things happening, a lot of different schedules, but trying to prioritize that. And then also, we've started implementing shift briefings. So every other week, we do a shift briefing between, so when the two shifts are switching, command staff attend those and kind of do a briefing of what's happening in the day, what's happening in the night, what's happening at the administrative level and at the command level, and what's happening in the community in general. So the folks who sometimes don't get the benefit of that cooler talk, you know, get a little bit more information than they were getting before. And that concludes my manager's report. Be happy to answer any questions?
Counsel?
Do you want to mention the late-breaking news on the wave?
Oh, yes, thank you. Late-breaking news is we got our CLOMAR. So that is our conditioner, conditional letter of map provision. That is specifically for Riverside Park and the Whitewater Wave. And that, we actually just learned that this afternoon, or confirmed it this afternoon, and that's why it wasn't included in the slides. Otherwise, there would have probably been some fireworks and some other things in there.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so that is the next-to-last piece of the puzzle, and it was one of the biggest permitting challenges for us to overcome. So that is, that's a really big accomplishment. I don't want to underemphasize that. The last thing is the flood permit, and from what I understand, it's pretty much just checking to make sure we got the CLOMAR, which now we have. And so that should be, you know, relatively perfunctory, so.
Yay.
Thank you for reminding me, Eric.
Any other questions from council? Council, Kim? Thank you. Great job. Wonderful. We next move into Section F, new business. First item that Shannon will talk about is the consideration of a lease proposal from Montessori School to use our Woodfin Community Center.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Friends of Montessori lease proposal. So a while back, the Friends of Montessori School approached the town after having learned that we might have some space that could be considered for their school. So just a little bit of background, the Friends of Montessori School is currently located in Woodfin off Riverside Drive. They've been there for about five years and just learned earlier this year that their lease would not be renewed. So that launched them into a search for more suitable space. They desire to stay in Woodfin, and so we were happy that they came to us and asked us about use, potential use of the community center. Schools, if you're not aware, do require special permitting, and we heard reference to the building code earlier today. Schools typically fall under a classification of what's called a semley. So not any building, and not any commercial building, will meet the requirement for a school, but our community center does. So community centers, places of worship, that's why you often see schools and churches co-located, because they satisfy those requirements. Now, the community center is not 100% going to satisfy what they need. It is going to take a little bit of renovation, and they are, but it's all very doable. And so Friends of Montessori, after initially touring the facility and talking with staff and kind of understanding what would need to happen, put together a proposal and shared it with us. And you all have received that proposal as well in your packets. But to summarize that proposal, they would rent the upper level of the community center for the school for an initial two-year term, with the option to renew for one additional year. They would pay rent and utilities, or a prorated amount of utilities that hasn't been worked out yet. The school would make certain modest improvements, as I mentioned, to meet their needs. And they may add or relocate a storage shed to the property, again, for their supplies, tools, and other equipment, and use the upper lawn and outdoor space. The recreation field at the lower terrace would still be available for the YMCA and other recreation groups. And they have also offered to offer priority to Woodfin residents for their incoming, or for spaces that are available in the school. The town would retain the ability to use the lower level, which is good. We don't have a lot of space in this building, and we are using some of that space now for some additional storage. So it would be helpful for us to be able to keep using that. So what the town would be responsible for, besides cleaning and emptying out the property, is we do need to work with some of the existing reservations. We've already reached out to, I think, everybody now at this point. One of our biggest concerns was the Woodfin community market. That's been sort of something we've been very proud to support and have here in Woodfin. But when I approached the organizers, they did say, you know, this is, might be something that was meant to be. It might make sense for us to start to look for space that, you know, because the market has become so successful and so popular, we could benefit from a larger space, from a larger parking lot. There might be another place out there that would better meet our needs anyway. So I'm happy to say that they have, I think, I don't know that it's final yet, but believe that they have found a new home at New Bridge Baptist Church. So not technically in Woodfin, but right on the edge of Woodfin. We consider New Bridge as part of our community, so I'm super excited to hear that news, that not only is it good for us, that it frees up the space potentially for this potential lease, but it is also good for the Woodfin community market. And we are looking, one of those repairs that I mentioned, is replacing and/or repairing our existing HVA system, which has been on its last leg for several years now. And I think with this lease, it's time for us to go ahead and make that investment and replace that system. And that, I believe that, yep, that concludes my introduction. Be happy to answer any questions. And representatives of the school are here. If there are any questions for them as well, do you guys want to come on up and introduce yourselves?
Hi, thank you guys for having us. I'm Carabeth Brackens. I'm the head of school at Friends Montessori. I co-run it with my husband, and we've been open for five years now, and we're big fans of Woodfin. We love it so much, and we're really grateful that you guys have even considered this and invited us here tonight.
Damon Hearn, I'm the secretary of the board with the school and a parent. I've had two daughters with Carabeth and Keenan. My youngest, Corley, is just finishing up her sixth-grade year and has been with them since year one in different configurations. And I'm excited to be part of the school and helping them find a location and happy to talk with you all.
I'm Brandon. I'm a father, got two girls in the school, new to the community. It's been really amazing for them and excited to help the team out here find a new spot for them.
Question from council?
Sure, I have a question. The photos that you sent over and that we saw today, are these before and after photos?
Yeah, so, yeah, the building that we're in, we're at 871 Riverside Drive, which is Riverside Baptist. And so we occupied two stories, about 7,000 square feet. And we came in in April of 2019, and the building was a mess, and it was mostly used for storage. And so we came in from April until August and did renovations. We did the floor and walls and cleaned everything up and got it ready for children and had it permitted. We share the building right now with Hawthorne Montessori, which is a primary program. And yeah, so the, I sent over pictures to Shannon earlier on. They were before and after. We've really, it's really heartbreaking for us to lose the building. We've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this space. But yeah, it's a really incredible space, and I feel really confident that we could do that really anywhere that we are. And we have the most incredible group of parents with us and who are definitely like, roll your sleeves up. We're not a high-income school at all. We have a lot of different income levels, and so our families are really interested in putting in the work together. And so paint crews and gardening crews and all of the things, we're really lucky to have that type of support.
So the takeaway is you have experience already.
So much. So much experience, yes.
If I may, you can blame some of that on me, because I had, happened to have a meeting with Sharon Lechner, who's my doctor.
Oh, great choice.
And when I found out you were doing this, I said, you know, it might be good for us to see what you're capable of doing before and after. So I thought that was good. to see what you're capable of doing before and after. So I thought that was good. One thing that I didn't see in the presentation, I just thought it was worth asking about, was the consideration for possible scholarships. As you know, Woodfin's not an affluent town, so I don't know if you want to talk about that, or if it's just part of the consideration.
I'd be happy to. Our school really operates on this. So we have something called a vet fund, which is voluntary equitable tuition. And so we have a base tuition, and the families that can meet that, that's wonderful, but most of our families can't. And so we have, we also have families who can go over that. And so we ask families who have the ability to pay more than what we're asking for. We also offer one of the lowest tuitions in all of Buncombe County. We've pulled all, I have information if you've ever liked to see that. So we already have one of the lowest tuitions. We do work with North Carolina to offer the Opportunity Scholarship. A lot of our families have that as well. And so the families who can pay more, they offer more every year, and that goes into our vet fund. And so the families who can't afford the tuition are able to use that. And so really, our goal is that the families who want to have their kids have this type of education, that they're able to. We really try not to say no to anybody, and we try to find a way to let everybody come.
The primary, if I may, the primary difference between your educational process and, say, Woodfin Elementary School, are they night and day?
Yes.
Does it resemble traditional school?
No, not at all, actually. So we're a non-traditional school because it's a Montessori education. So those who aren't familiar, Montessori is one of the oldest pedagogies around. It was from more than 200 years ago. It was created by Dr. Maria Montessori. She was a neuro doctor, one of the first in Italy, and she was doing her residency with children in programs with kids with dyslexia and ADHD and all of these things, places where kids were shunned. And she developed the system where she felt like really all the kids could learn. So our system, if you come into our classroom, there's no desks or like a blackboard. A teacher isn't in the middle of the room. Our kids work on rugs or tables. They get to, one of the main things is that they learn time management. And so they have to do math and language and geography and science and history, but they get to really choose when they do that throughout the day. If they, if they are somebody who likes to start their day off with math, then they get to start with math, and then move into something else later on. Some kids like to start with language. And then the teachers' jobs are to guide them through that, and we know what benchmarks they need to be hitting at what point, you know, at what timeframes. And so we're really guiding the kids in that. Our classrooms are multi-age, so we've got two classrooms. The first is first, second, and third. The second is fourth, fifth, and sixth. And so the kids are working, they very much, actually, we run our classrooms like this. We have meetings for business every week where the kids bring agenda items. We form an agenda together. They talk about the needs at the school. And sometimes that can range from, you know, there's too much mulch in the gaga ball pit, and they don't want it, and how are they gonna get it removed, and who's gonna volunteer to be on that committee? And sometimes it's something, you know, really serious, like, you know, all the scissors are missing, and what do we do about that? And so we're, they're working really collaboratively together. They've got the older kids modeling for the younger. The younger kids are keeping them grounded and humble about their process. And they're really, we try to model what it looks like in an actual adult society.
So, Jim, I'd like to say that I have extensive personal experience with Montessori schools, and I will say without a doubt that the experience that it gives children with ADHD and dyslexia, it can either ma, it could be, it's all the difference in the world for that particular child. So while Woodfin Elementary, of course, can handle more in-the-box-style child, those that don't fit inside the box thrive in a Montessori school where they don't typically thrive in a traditional public school in the younger grades.
It is grades one through?
Six.
One through six, not kindergarten?
No.
One to six, okay.
I just realized, too, I neglected to include in my slides the suggested motion, but the way it was framed in a step report was just, just simply to authorize the town manager to work out any details for the lease and enter into the lease agreement.
I've got it. All right. I moved to authorize the town manager to enter into a lease agreement with Friends Montessori School for a period of two years with an option to renew for one one-year term.
I second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Questions, final questions, concerns? Thank you.
I have one question, but it's for Shannon. So what I read is there's really not much current use.
Not a lot. I mean, we do, we have had some reservations. We stopped taking reservations about the time that we started talking with the school, just because we didn't want to have to be like the venue's leader. And we've worked with the existing reservations. We'll be done with the large groups, will be done in May, and with small groups in June. But we don't do a lot of rentals. I would say a couple a month during the sort of busier season, and we're lucky one a month during the off-season.
Good question. Others? All right, the motion's on the floor. Is there a second? Or was there a second?
I should do.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. All in favor, raise a hand, please. That's 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Woodfin, or part of Woodfin. Item two is consideration of an agreement between the Town of Woodfin and the Woodfin Community Garden Committee to establish a new community garden, and I couldn't be happier than anybody to have you here tonight. Go ahead, Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm actually just gonna turn it over to Lily and Katie and ask them to come up. They did a great presentation at the Parks and Greenways Advisory Committee. I don't think I could improve on that, so I'm just gonna turn the floor over to them.
Yeah, we're being broadcast live, so you gotta get in the camera and the microphone. Thank you.
Okay.
You're good.
You're good?
So hello, my name's Katie, and this is Lily. And we are proposing that the Geneva Manny Park be converted into a community garden space. The, the vision is that this would be a space for experiencing overall well-being while also growing fresh produce, herbs, and flowers. It would be a collaborative space, so people from the community could come and gather. We could have educational opportunities as well as plots that neighbors could rent to grow their own vegetables. A little bit of the background of this project, back in the fall of '22, we did an initial interest survey of neighbors, and we, from that, formed a steering committee. And we started talking with the town around that time and had considered a couple of spaces. One of them was actually with the elementary school, and we were starting to move forward with that, and then got news kind of at the end of the previous summer that that wasn't gonna work out. And thankfully, the town offered us the possibility of the Geneva Manny Park because the French Broad River Academy had, students had recently done a survey of the neighbors that live adjacent to that park and found out that a community garden was something that came up in their survey that would be a good repurpose for that space. So we did another survey, and we've continued to get more interest and support in this idea, and specifically now for this site. And then we did present, as it was mentioned, to the Parks and Greenway Committee last month and got unanimous support from them for this idea. These are some examples of comments that came in on our surveys of what people would like to use a community garden space for. This is a picture of the site, if you're not familiar with it, as well as an aerial map with the measurements. It's a very odd-shaped piece of land, but it is relatively flat, which is very valuable for gardening and is full sun. There is one large mature maple tree on there, which is nice for people to cool off and rest when they're gardening. So we, as I mentioned before, we imagined this to be a space where there would be communal beds, where people could come and garden together without any sort of real commitment for, for their time or money. And then we could share that produce and flowers and herbs that are grown there. We would have rented beds for residents that were interested in paying a small fee to have a, a place to grow food. And then we'd have space for gathering, for workshops and community events, and then also would like to have space for native plants and wildlife. This is an example of a, a site plan that someone donated to us, a landscape designer that I know. So this is a, not set in stone design, but is something that we are envisioning. Where part of the space is the rented plots in raised beds, and then the other side would be, this kind of closer to the lookout corner, is where it would be more communal beds, maybe like some fruit and berry trees, and then spaces for gathering.
So yeah, I just came up with some inspiration photos that, that Katie and I found, just to give you an idea of what it might look like if you were to, to come by the garden. And one thing that you would see if you came by, probably on a Saturday during the growing season, is a diverse group of Woodfin residents working to maybe work in the communal gardening space. We plan on, on hosting weekly workdays during the growing season and advertising those with the help of partners like Boundless Cities. So it'd be open, not just to Woodfin residents, you know, volunteers from anywhere could come and help. We would reach out to UNC Asheville if there were college students that wanted to come volunteer and contribute, for example. Maybe have some experts come in and, and do some, some workshops and stuff like that. We want to have some garden beds of, of different shapes and sizes, and definitely make sure that some of the gardening spaces are, are accessible to, to all folks. And in that communal space, there's a lot of room for creativity. So the, the site plan, like Katie said, is, is a little bit of a draft. I think we're pretty set on, on the arrangement of the kind of rented or allotment-style beds. But the other space, there's a lot of flexibility, and so volunteers and community members will have a say in, in what that looks like. We want to have spaces where children especially can interact and grow food. We have some creatively shaped garden spaces. We definitely want to have some, some shady seating, like Katie mentioned, for people to, to sit and gather. It'd be a space where, where families can, can come. One thing we really like about the site, in addition being flat and sunny, is that it is fenced in, and so that it's naturally a safe space for families having already been in the park. And those rental beds, this was something I was really passionate about. I've visited community gardens in big cities across the country, and also around the United Kingdom, where the allotment-style gardens are, are more common. And it's one of my favorite things to do. If you ever go to a big city, like San Francisco or Portland, or look up community gardens just on Google Maps, and it's sometimes just a really fun thing to do because everyone does their own thing, and they grow different types of vegetables and flowers and have their own garden decorations. So it's just such a diverse thing to see all these different families kind of expressing themselves through growing plants in different ways. And it's such an opportunity to share and demonstrate. So this would be an opportunity for families that maybe live in an apartment or a small house without a sunny space in their yard, where they could have a place where they could grow food for their household, involve their children in that. And so we would rent out these beds on an annual basis for a small fee. We're thinking like a sliding scale, 20 to $50 per year, and ask people to pay what they can. And we would have an agreement on file. We would send out applications and give first priority to the people that have responded to the survey already to open it up. And if people utilize the space, they could kind of continue that rental for the next year. And, you know, if it kind of falls through and they don't end up using the space very much, you know, we say, you know, could you have this bed come up for another family to use next year? And we would, you know, encourage these people to also participate in the community space, maybe volunteer some time and help others, and maybe donate their, their harvest if they had extras. So that's kind of what, what it would hopefully look like. Our, our kind of timeline for establishing the garden first is preparing the site, and this is where we're asking the town to help by removing equipment and creating a spigot, and I'll go into a little more detail on each of these steps. Next would be garden installation, and this is where we would really take the lead and bring in a lot of outside funding and resources to kind of set up the garden space. And then ongoing maintenance, we're, we're asking for what we hope is pretty minimal support from the town. We know there's a lot of projects going on, especially in parks. But the idea is that guys give us a little bit, and we're gonna run with it and create a resource that does a lot for the community without a lot of, of input from the town needed. So a little bit more detail on the proposal document. We brought a couple copies, and I know that Shannon linked it on the agenda as well. Removing the old equipment, the plastic mulch barriers, which are those black rectangles around the outside. And then also there's aging landscaping fabric that's gonna need to be scraped away, because we don't want that degrading and mixing into the soil where people are growing food. And then to grade the site with proper drainage, and initially cover with a good layer of mulch to kind of get us established, and use a good blank canvas to get started with. We know that historically there was a water fountain at the location, so the idea is that there's already a water source there that should make installing a spigot a little bit more easier than putting in a new water line. So some sort of a lockable spigot system that we could control and manage the use of. To perform any safety repairs necessary, we want to have a small storage shed, so if a permit's required for that, that's a minute to come up and subdue our grants to approve that. And to assist us in developing signage that meets town requirements, we have budgeted for some grant support for creating a sign. Boundless Cities has some support. They can help us with creating a sign, but we want to make sure it, it fits the town requirements. So we'll, we'll definitely have conversations about that. But in terms of establishing the garden, we plan on bringing in initially a minimum of, of $3,500, but hopefully within the next couple of years, up to $7,250 is our goal for grant funding. So we're, we're kind of initially need that $3,500 to, to get started with, with what we want. We're already included in a tipping...
Yeah, Buncombe County Tipping Point Grant.
Tipping Point Grant proposal along with Boundless Cities. And, you know, once we get formal approval from the town, we're gonna start rolling on some additional grant proposals as well. Hopefully bringing in, you know, a good amount of money to set up some garden beds, some pathway infrastructures, get that storage shed, and buy some tools and equipment that can be used by all, to have some picnic tables and benches, either from grant funding or maybe donated or, or sponsored by local businesses. To start, we'd love to put in some fruit shrubs in part of the communal space, and so invest in some larger shrubs would be great if we got the funding for that. And then signage. And again, a more detailed budget is, is in the proposal you have as well. And then ongoing support, once we get initially set up, we're not asking a lot of the town. One is to, to cover the cost of the water used in the garden. We will have the one spigot, but it'll be locked when not in use. And any volunteers that have access to the spigot will receive training on appropriate use and water conservation. We're not gonna set up a sprinkler on a timer. It'll be, you know, individually hosed watering as needed, and we also want to set up some, some rainwater catchment on the shed. To provide a portable toilet in the parking lot during the grazing season each year, that's probably the biggest ask. But I think that's really important for accessibility, especially for families, to not have to, you know, get in the car and drive to Silverline when your three-year-old all of a sudden really needs to go. So provide trash and recycling services. There's already a trash can there. We'd love to have one of the town recycling bins as well to go along with that. And then we're gonna focus on inside of the fence, and so outside, there's a small strip of grass I know is already being loaned by the town, just to continue that. And then to help promote our, our events and social media. You know, once we're, once we're rolling with full approval and we're, we're getting started with that garden, we're gonna reach out to a lot of folks, especially local businesses to ask them for monies. But we're already, have had a lot of conversations with Boundless Cities. They've helped a lot. Katie's worked a lot with them. They're helping us already with some grant funding. Asheville Greenworks, I work with a lot, and they can definitely donate some plants. Buncombe County Master Gardeners, we're hoping will help us especially with some expertise. They have some volunteer hour requirements. We think they would be a great contributor to some of our community workdays. French Broad River Middle School has already been involved, and so we hope to, to tie them back into this project. Western North Carolina Food Systems Coalition is, is working on a network of community gardens and some other great projects. And then UNC Asheville, Katie works at UNC Asheville, and I went to school there, and my partner has managed some of the, the gardens there. And so we want to work with their, the Student Environmental Center and the campus gardeners there and get their, their help and support. So we already have some, some connections built that way.
I might also add, we don't have these on here, but like, it would be great to connect with Woodfin Elementary School and their staff and families, and then also the Friends Montessori, now that I know that you exist.
Yeah, actually, one of our early site considerations was putting some little raised beds outside the, the community center. So I was thinking about that as you guys were presenting. So I was thinking about that as you guys were presenting. So, yeah, we want to continue to reach out. I think there's a lot of great things happening in Woodfin. It's exciting to be a Woodfin homeowner. It's probably the coolest place in Buncombe County to be, I think, and there's a lot of great things going on. I'm a little biased, but I've been, this project has really given me like a positive outlook and given me something to hope for. And so we're really excited to get to the point where it might actually happen. So our ideal timeline goals, and I think this lines up with Shannon's staff report, is we would love to begin putting some stuff in that space this fall, installing some beds, bringing in some good soil so that by spring 2025, we can plant some plants. You know, it's going to be an ongoing process. We'll continue to add and build. Every time you drive past, it's weird to turn on Lookout Road, but it'll be worth it because you'll want to go see what we're working on. My dad was talking about that. He hates that turn. Anyway, so without showing him the garden. But there'll be a lot going on, so that's kind of our hope there. So any questions that you have for us?
I actually have one. This is great. Not to prejudice the jury, but it really is great.
Jim's already prejudiced. He was on our first steering committee.
I've been following them for two years.
I remember you sent me down there to look at that six months ago, I think. I've been in community gardens as well. I think it's a great addition. I have also had neighboring beds where they, the intent was great, but the follow-through was not. And there was six feet of weeds growing next to my tomatoes. So two questions on that in terms of just management. How do you, how will you manage the occasional infraction? And also, we're pretty close to the river there. How do you make sure that we're not putting anything that oughtn't be there?
Sure. When we were kind of figuring out our mission and vision, there was this list of questions that Katie found in this community garden guide we were working through. And one thing we think will be important and will be in agreement is that this will be a garden where there's not any synthetic and artificial like pesticides or synthetic fertilizers. So basically, not that we'll be certified organic, but that organic growing methods would be used and that we would communicate that a lot. And then in terms of maintenance, you know, when we agree to kind of rent a bed to a family or a resident, there would be, you know, some paperwork and some stuff that they would fill out. I mean, nothing legalese, but something that we would keep on file and have contact information. And so that's where, you know, we draw straws to see who calls someone to have a hard conversation.
About their weeds.
About their weeds. You know, but we would line out and have some pretty strict things like, you know, not extending into the pathways and things like that. And so I think, you know, that'll happen. People will be ambitious and then life will happen or something will happen in their lives and they won't be able to tend to a bed. And we'll encourage them to communicate with us if they think something like that's going to happen and then we'll have that conversation. And if it needs to be that we, you know, use a community workday to clean out and kind of clear out a bed of unwanted vegetation. And then, you know, if it's early in the season, we throw some sunflower seeds in and then that bed's up for rental next year.
So just to clarify, you're saying that the agreement that you have with each individual person that is renting a bed, you will have stated on there that there will not be herbicides, pesticides.
Correct, yeah.
And it's stated very clearly.
Yes, we really clearly put that in writing, yeah. And one of our future signage goals would be to have some like garden guidelines on a sign within the garden that talked about kind of the principles and practices of the garden as well. Yeah, thanks.
And the steering committee is, will be administering the program?
Yep, us.
And we would welcome additional people at some point, but this is kind of what it's boiled down to at this point.
And there's a lot of great folks we've worked with that have helped us out and contributed, but we're both really steadfast. We're both Woodfin homeowners.
I will guarantee you that if council approves this and the word gets out, you will have residents of Woodfin asking to help.
Yeah, and I think naturally there will be folks that end up taking up leadership positions in terms of, you know, managing volunteers or someone, you know, working on obtaining things or anyway. Well, we'll have work. There's, like the beloved folks said, once you start asking for help, you're really pleasantly surprised by all the great folks in this community that are willing to contribute their time and energy.
Other questions?
I would just say.
Ken or Johanna, did you?
The signage, so we will continue to be under Ms. Maney's, like it'll be Geneva Maney's community garden. Because she was a very important person to this community and the northern areas for education and I just don't want that part taken away. She would be very honored with this.
Yeah, we did some research and I think it's important to us that Geneva Maney's name stays and so our kind of working title is the Woodfin Community Garden at Geneva Maney Park. And we don't have plans to take down the sign that says Geneva Maney Park or maybe add a new sign maybe at the like entrance from the parking lot potentially with the community garden.
Ken? Yeah, one other thought just occurred to me and I don't want to overcomplicate anybody's life, but I'm going to. Signage is something we've talked about peripherally about the identity of the town. And I just wonder if whatever you're going to put up in signage either puts a nod to how we might be going forward. Maybe it's the first one and everything starts to start, share some of those elements. But I think about the branding of the town, this is not a bad place to start thinking about it.
Since you're complicating it already, I'll go a step further. I didn't see a proposed lease in here. I take it that doesn't exist yet, an agreement between the town. So I don't care who makes the motion. I'm just going to tell you now that I would ask that the suggested motion in the packet be modified to instead of reading, moving to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement, to have that changed to read that the town manager in consultation with the town attorney will negotiate and if appropriate, enter into an agreement. Because there are things like insurance, non-waiver of governmental immunity, a number of things that have to be spelled out and would be a deal breaker if they couldn't be spelled out. And so that just needs to be ironed out first.
And now we're going to have two attorneys complicate things. That was a concern that I've had because we're not dealing with an organized entity. I mean, beautifully organized, don't.
Yeah, we're unofficial, yeah.
But you're not a recognized entity. So who we're leasing with, who's actually officially in control of anything? I don't, you know, and as Councilman Ederson says, anytime you're inviting the public to town property, you can think about liability and making sure we're not waiving any defenses the town will have otherwise. I mean, I think it's a net gain overall when all of this gets done because you're replacing possibly, you know, I look at the, you tell me it's outdated equipment and we've already documented that. I think about it, I couldn't stop my kids from getting on that if they had the opportunity. So I think it's probably a net gain overall in terms of liability. There are some things to work through and you might consider 501(c)(3) type of assets.
Katie, if you will email me tomorrow, I'll connect you with Judy Butler, who's on the Board of Directors of the Woodfin Business Association. She will agree, she wouldn't mind me saying, she'll probably watch it, that this is right up their alley if they can help you and maybe figure some of this out. It's a natural place, I hope, that people will start going to our businesses.
Yeah, our hope was that because it was a park and it was maybe located at a park that that would help because it was already an existing town space that was open for that kind of thing. And then, I mean, we have worked with Boundless Cities. They are a recognized organization and they organize and network community gardens in Buncombe County. So that may be, you know, we can discuss with them is they may be able to be a partner so that things line up a little bit better.
That'd probably shortcut your process to partner with somebody who's already established, but none of what we're talking about should be an obstacle to bringing this to fruition. It's just those are details that have to be worked on first.
Yeah.
There are groups like the Woodfin Business Association that already have a nonprofit in place that might satisfy the need. At least have that discussion. I think she'll, she wants to have that discussion.
And then, yeah, in terms of signage, you know, if we need to create our own sign, we can get some budget funding to do that. If you want to create a sign for us that lines up with your vision of signs in the town, you are more than happy to do that. And we'll be in conversation with Shannon and with the Parks and Greenways Advisor Council before we make any decisions or create any.
I don't think that's discussion. I don't even think it touches my eye, anybody's eye but my own. But I think it's important that we don't lose sight of the opportunity to start here maybe.
Other questions, concerns?
Want to make the motion?
Before we have a motion?
Yeah.
Are there more questions?
Yeah.
I'm happy to do so. I didn't want to step on anyone's toes. I know other council members have worked on this far more than me and all credit to them, but I'm happy to read the motion with the change if.
Let's make sure. Any other questions for gardeners? Okay.
All right. I move to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to negotiate and if appropriate, enter into an agreement with representatives of the Woodfin Community Garden Committee for a period of one year with an option to renew for two one-year terms. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise a hand please. Beautiful. We're going to have a community garden in Woodfin. Fantastic.
Yay.
Thank you for hanging in there all this time. Good. Okay, the next item number three is approval of ordinance 2024-04, amending Chapter 6, 22, and 38, removing criminal penalties associated with certain violations. Shannon, top.
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize, I realized as I was sitting, as the meeting got started, that we did not enter the slides for this particular item. But not to worry because there would be two slides, literally. This is a very short, easy, straightforward text amendment to the Code of Ordinances. And what we're trying to do is we're identifying, it's, the town is authorized under state statutes to enforce violations of our code through a fining structure, also through, in some instances, criminal penalties. So this is almost always a misdemeanor. But how effective those misdemeanors are, whether or not it's appropriate in a lot of instances, and the fact that we've almost never used it and applied it. So it kind of called to question whether or not it was necessary to have these in our Code of Ordinances. So this text amendment, if supported by council, would remove that criminal misdemeanor penalty for certain violations included in Chapter 6, which is animals. This does not include cruelty to animals, though. That stays. So these are things like barking dogs or, well, even barking dog, not cleaning up after your pet or not having your pet be spayed or neutered or things like that. We have never issued a misdemeanor for any of these violations and so it's not a concern and staff fully supports this. Then also Chapter 22, which is our nuisance ordinance. So these are things like junk vehicles. Trying to recall, some trash and littering also is included in this section or in this chapter, so we would remove again those criminal misdemeanors. The third is Chapter 38, which is our solid waste. So much like the nuisance, the trash and littering, it's, these are people putting inappropriate things in their trash cans, overloading their trash cans. The way the code was written, after a certain number of violations, we can move to a misdemeanor and again, just not appropriate, never been applied and questionably effective. So it's our recommendation that we remove the penalties or the criminal misdemeanors associated with these particular penalties as outlined in that ordinance, which is 2024-04. Be happy to answer any questions.
Quick question. What is Chapter 14, flood damage protection? What is that? What kind of offenses are we looking at?
14 is our, that is, I can't recall. I'm trying to remember. It was, I believe it was something fairly serious and so we decided probably best to keep it in there.
It's not included in the list of ones that the penalty's coming out of.
Yeah, that is, so there are some that are staying. So I identified all the chapters where we have criminal misdemeanors. So that's one where we actually keep.
I misread that.
Yeah.
I've matched all of them up.
Sorry.
So Shannon, what is put in place to?
Discourage these violations.
Discourage these actions.
It's the fining structure that was already in place. It remains. So we can still fine people for these violations. And our typical process is to issue a notice or a warning first, then if there is any response or a repeat offense, then we might follow up with a fine or citation. To be perfectly honest, these aren't particularly effective either. But having, in some cases, it could be useful.
The reason why I ask is if there are people watching, they may, they may ask, well, what's in place to help enforce my neighbor to not have blue tarps all over their yard because they've covered all these junk items?
Yeah. So in instances of like junk or, you know, a lot of these situations are sort of hoarding situations, which tend to be mental health issues anyway. It's not really somebody who is flagrantly violating the laws. And in those instances, the most effective remedy is actually to call on volunteers or other nonprofit services to kind of come in and help. Again, the fining structure and also in a lot of these instances, this is low wealth or low income families and, you know, the fines aren't effective, you know, in that regard as well. So we are exploring a lot of other ways to resolve these situations, including this volunteer support or nonprofit service partners in our community can help with some of these more problematic situations.
So there's always been a civil means of enforcement. Either through a declaratory sort of relief, go to court and say, make them comply with our ordinance because it's law, or penalty structures which say they need to pay if this is, you know, if it's set out there, it's that way. The state statute 14-4 was added as sort of a gloss on that for situations literally a hundred years ago, somewhere there, that were considered to be not, so you didn't have sufficient teeth in a civil remedy. The past four or five years has been a statewide reexamination of whether or not that's really appropriate because it most often punishes people with criminal sanctions when there, as Shannon says, there's a lot better civil means and even sort of civil supportive community means that it might get you where you want to be. So this is in line with what has been happening all across the state and reexamined how much we're criminalizing fairly, you know, harmless behavior comparatively. But there are still means. Nobody should think that means that we are removing all, you know, infractious.
It's been, past three years for North Carolina, it's been more than a decade for other states. So the reason you don't have criminal penalties is that throwing someone into the criminal justice system because they didn't mow their lawn is one of the most inequitable things you can do to another human being. It took the state of North Carolina until 2021 to come to that realization and pass a law that by default makes that no longer the case. It used to just be the opposite. It used to be by default, any municipal ordinance violation was a misdemeanor. Even North Carolina took that away in 2021. So removing those separate sections that still exist from our ordinance is, I think, appropriate and long overdue.
Other opinions, questions, concerns from any council members? There is a suggested motion in the packet if someone would like to.
I made that motion. I move to approve ordinance number 2024-04, removing criminal penalties associated with certain non-public safety-related violations.
We have a motion in a second. Any further concern or discussion? If you're in favor, raise a hand please.
Just hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Be certain this doesn't need a public hearing. Okay, all right, okay. Good.
We have one.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise a hand for, please. 6-0, thank you very much. Good work.
And we'll get the website updated to include the public slides.
Is everybody okay without a break? You want to power on for a while? Okay. Item number four, we will have a public hearing after the presentations regarding ordinance 2024-05, a request to conditionally rezone 12.42 acres located at 74 Washington Avenue from residential District R10 to community shopping conditional zone CSCZ. The property is identified of the Buncombe County tax record as PIN number 9730-56-6180. Property owner is Buncombe County Board of Education and the project contact is Ariel Regner on behalf of the property owner. Ricky Hurley is going to present and then we will have a public hearing after both parties have been able to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we have Ariel, it's Renier, right? She's the engineer of record with us tonight. And thank you for the introduction, by the way. So if everybody's probably familiar with the sign that says bus transportation here at the end of Washington Avenue, which is basically just across the street. And I have learned some history about that as well. So it appears that the county acquired that property in about 1960 and that the bus garage was operating out of that area prior to the incorporation of the Town of Woodfin in 1971. And as we all know, that there was no zoning in Buncombe County up until, what, like '09, 2010. So I'm not really sure what date that zoning was brought into Woodfin, but probably sounds like '71, '73. So it's a long way of saying that the bus garage predates. bus garage predates the town of Woodfin and the R10 zoning at this area. So as you see, there's some community shopping, which is directly across the highway, which is, the one to upper right is like the Kirby site, just for reference. So here's Ariel's photo of the bus garage. You can see that the preponderance of the site is a large parking surface. What I understand is there are like 250 to 300 buses show up there during the summer months when the students are out of session. They bring them all there to do preventive maintenance, do some washing. And then just immediately to the south is residential neighborhood along Washington Avenue. There's a lot of lots immediately to the south that are undeveloped at this date. They're like a non-conforming old subdivision. Okay, here's the site plan. So you can kind of see, I think we said in the last meeting, it's like a paddleboard that runs north-south on the plan. And the hatched area to the left is the office garage addition. And then in the kind of lower right, you'll see a smaller box with a small rectangle hatch in that lower right. That is the proposed bus wash. They're planning to enclose that bus wash based on comments at the Planning Board of Adjustment meeting, just to kind of cut off or preempt any noise or other negative effects of that kind of splashing out into the neighborhood to the south. So here's some kind of, just some early elevations showing pretty much that larger addition that will come out to the west of the building. And so looking here to the kind of northeast, that red building is existing building. The bus wash will be immediately to the south of that, or kind of in the front of it in this view. And the left of the picture, you'll see the existing garage office complex there. And then, of course, just more to the northwest, you see kind of the perimeter of the parking lot with the office garage in the right center. So you can see it's basically a sea of asphalt. There is no planned expansion to impervious surface or building on that, so there's not going to be a need of a, excuse me, stormwater device that's not going to be triggered. So if we'll go back to that site plan just briefly, you can kind of see that that property line kind of runs east to west. They've recently completed a survey. We're waiting on that to be kind of firmed up. But typically, when you have a commercial zoning, abutting residential, you'll have a 10-foot buffer strip or buffer yard with some trees and shrubs. They were asking for that, causes some uncertainty, that to be reduced to the existing, basically space between the fence and the property line. When I was out there late last week, looks like it varies from about three to four feet on the east side to maybe five, maybe as much as seven as you look westward behind the existing houses. Did get to speak to both neighbors at the end of the driveway or into the road. Both have, you know, kind of good neighbors, looked out over the site, kind of keep their eye on there. If anybody gets trapped in, lock them back, stand. Animals get trapped. Check on the workers there. So basically, they just want to reduce that buffer to basically what's already existing without having to tear up pavement or move the fence. And then use of LED light fixtures for any lighting that may occur instead of like the typical sodium, which is basically fading away. Like I said, last month, which was two weeks ago tonight, Planning Board of Adjustment did review this. They had two additional comments, but they voted in favor, five to zero, again, identifying that suitable buffer on the southern boundary, and then exploring enclosing the wash bay, which in conversations, they've added that enclosure to the wash bay on that one. And I believe since our time in two weeks, that survey, I think we're waiting to come back. There may be room to actually put some plantings, but we're waiting on that to come back. And so staff would concur with the PBOA. I think it's, you know, considering it's a legacy property, it's working with the county school system, supplies necessary transportation to students across the entire county. And they did apply some additional conditions to kind of limit traffic moving forward. And the fact is, CZ, it's not going to be flipped to apartments or another type of commercial business without coming before this board again. So there is some more certainty or constraints on a change of future use. With that, is there any questions? I try not to run too fast, but I know I don't want to keep y'all all night talking about it.
Questions from council?
It looks like the same trust owns six of the lots abutting the southern boundary.
That's correct.
Did we get any communication from whoever the owner of that is?
I have not heard anything from them. We did mail notices to all the adjacent property owners. We heard, I had a phone call from the neighbor on the end on the right, Mr. and Ms. Jenkins, talked to them on site. They had concerns more about removing some landscaping they've installed, they don't want it tore out. Spoke with the lady at the very end on the left last week, seemed kind of supportive of the request. And then I believe at the PBOA meeting, we had a neighbor one back on the left, that's, their attorney had came, more concerned about buffering and change of use in the area. But that's a long way of saying, no, I have not heard any other written or phone conversation from the neighborhood.
Other questions, concerns?
I would just add that the condition regarding the buffer on the southern end, Ricky has worked with the applicant to revise that condition after the PBOA meeting to better address having some.
Absolutely. Ariel, anything to add in particular? I think we've covered it. Other questions from council? If not, will entertain a motion?
Would the motion need to?
I'm sorry, you are correct.
Sorry.
Trying to get you out of here. Okay, we are going to have a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that signed up? We're going to open this public hearing at 6:35. Is anyone here to speak about this project, for or against it? Even if you didn't sign up, anybody want to make a comment or express a concern? All right, we'll close this public hearing at 6:36 PM, and the floor is open.
Would a motion need to include something in regard to the buffer on the southern end, or is that?
I think it's been addressed. There may be opportunity to enhance that even more, but I think we have some minimum operating standard included in the conditions.
All right, I'd be happy to make the motion. I move to approve the conditional zoning of 12.42 acres as shown on Exhibits A and B, from R10 residential district to community shopping conditional zone, subject to the conditions identified in Exhibit D, project conditions, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that request. One protects land and buildings for small-scale employment uses, supports jobs that are locally accessible for residents to both live and work in Woodfin, supports area and partners, area partners and educational institutions.
Excellent. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Con. Any further discussion? If not, if you're in favor of this, please raise a hand. That is six oh, thank you so much. Good job. Ricky? Item number five, which we will also have a public hearing after the presentation, is related to ordinance number 2024-08, a request to conditionally rezone 7.84 acres located at 99999 Reynolds Mountain Boulevard from community shopping, CS, district to community shopping, two conditional zonings, which would become CS2-CZ. The property is identified in Buncombe County tax record as PIN number 9730-79-9689. The applicant is Andero Gonzalez, Rocky River, North Carolina, LLC, on behalf of property owner Shari Hari Pupa, which is an LLC. Ricky?
Thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. Like I said, it's 7.84 acres located kind of toward the end of Reynolds Mountain Boulevard. So there's the Reynolds Mountain Christian Academy, and this is immediately to the left, right before you get to the apartment complex at the dead end of that road. And as a reminder, CS does not allow for residential uses, so we do CS2, which is the only commercial district that we have that allows for apartments, hence the CS2 designation. So here again, here's the zoning map. That's US 1923, 26th on the far left. And then you see some R10 immediately to the right. And you see our subject property is hatched. Ariel's photo probably makes a little bit more sense to you. You can see the apartments, like I said, to the right, the school to the left. And immediately to the south is like a skilled care facility. And this is also a popular road. We've had multiple requests, and so we've had this senior living facility, Hawthorne, back in last summer, like a 54-foot tall building, just to the left of this project. So here's the master plan. So it's a single building that is a three, four-story split. The reason why is, as you know, it's sloping from, in this case, top to bottom. The retaining wall is actually through the middle of the building. So if you'll notice that each end of the building, there's a little bit of a wing wall that comes out. So instead of getting a split retaining wall site where we got like a 20-foot wall on the uphill side that you see, and a 20, 25-foot wall on the downhill side, this is integrated into the building. So that visual, kind of, it's kind of abrupt, is not there. It'll be integrated into it. And I'll show you an elevation shortly. They are showing a sidewalk along Reynolds Mountain Boulevard, an amenity area, in this case, above the building or to the east. And then they're having underground stormwater detention as required, because there'll be grading more than an acre requires a stormwater device. So this is a downhill view, and so it's a four-story building. It's going to average about 60 feet on the downhill side, more like 33, 35 on the uphill, hence a condition of the average maximum height of 48. And we kind of specified the three, four maxes. And here's a cross-section, so you can kind of see, again, that kind of, it makes that L shape, that's where your retaining wall's at. So they're kind of using the building to do more of the retaining. It's real brushy, actually got a tick while I was out here when I posted the sign. Their ticks are already out, so just warning. Yeah, they start early. So the site was substantially graded. Me and, Shannon and I did a little bit of digging. Shannon was kind of asking me about today, but we checked with Buncombe County. It appears that there was probably a speculative clearing and grading of the site done back in 2018. And a stormwater permit was issued because they were grading more an acre in the county. But that's pretty much it. The site went dormant sometime toward 1920, and that's just where it's at. We could not locate an approved plan that showed X number of units, but there's substantial grading on that site. It's pretty level right now in the middle pad. And I would say, based on what I could see, it looks like about 75% already graded. And we typically will allow regrading of areas in steep slope. You just can't do a lot more than that. That speaks to one of those conditions of, you know, bumping up the maximum grading from 15 to about 80, and the impervious is typically eight. We're looking at 50 to make this project happen. It is fairly flat. It was 22%, so it's barely qualifying. So mention those modifications, the use of LED lighting. We're going to get there one day on LED lighting added, I promise. Again, about the maximum height limit to an average of 48 feet. 35 is our average limit townwide. The maximum four stories, 60 feet downhill, three stories, 35 uphill. And then about that, allowable land disturbance impervious. Again, Planning Board of Adjustment did review this again two weeks ago. We were very busy last month, or is that what I should say? And they recommended approval unanimously, five to zero. There wasn't way much comments from that board. And we have not actually heard anything from anybody at the public. We have not gotten any calls, questions, and we've notified and mailed and posted the sign.
Would the, would the housing development above it have been notified?
Yeah, we would, we notified that property owner.
Okay, great.
Which, I'll just say as a note, it's very rare to get 120 units at 100% affordable in any complex. I think, as you recall, we struggled to even get 10 or 15% in any development. So I think this is a unique opportunity for the town to get 120 units that are affordable to some level, 80% or less. And I think the condition is, Shannon, we updated today?
So I was going to say, one of the earlier slides, it said affordable to those earning at or below 80% AMI. And that condition's now been revised to be 60, an average across the community of 60% AMI. So that means some might be above 60, some would be below 60, but so that the average is at 60. So 120 units, 100% of them affordable to those with an average income of 60%.
How does enforcement work on that? When they're ready to start renting, do they have to come to you?
We would ask for some information. It's, we can't do it at the permitting stage, but at the occupancy stage, we could ask for some referrals and some information. And then beyond that, it's typically kind of an honor system. We could check in periodically, but this particular project, as it is a fully affordable housing project, will almost certainly have to include other subsidies. And that money would also probably require, you know, monitoring of the affordability. So it should be low, low stress on us.
Yeah. And I think we put that update condition on their desk just before.
Yeah, that update condition is in your, and it, but it came late, so it did not get included in the meeting materials or what's posted online. So if somebody makes a motion, we would ask that you do it with the condition that condition number four be revised, and then you could read that with the condition.
Okay, if there's any other questions, otherwise I'll step aside. I think, Jason? Jordan, Jordan, Jordan. Yes, sir.
Ricky, I do have a question. So.
Come on up.
I get the history here, this developer and the current developer. The request to go to increase from 75 to 80% on area of disturbance, and the request to go up to 50% in the impervious surface. Is there any reason to suspect that an independent analysis of the site might be needed in terms of that large and impervious surface?
Independent analysis?
To determine whether, to determine whether it's safe, for example, or whether it fits with the rest of the plan.
Like a geotechnical assessment?
It could be that.
I mean, we don't require it for any other project. So I think I'd be concerned about requiring it for a affordable housing project. And I don't think we've had problems of that nature.
When you've gone up to 50% from 15%?
Oh, we had plenty of sites that are 100% before. I mean, impervious, if you saw the bus garage.
Right, right.
Although that wasn't 100%. But you see the kind of coverage that we see. This project, Ricky mentioned earlier, would have underground detention. So it does require stormwater engineering to make sure. And the post-development runoff cannot exceed pre-development runoff. So that analysis will look at how much water leaks the site. And once the project is fully constructed, it would be documented, well, through the engineering, it's documented that it is no more, possibly less, water leaking the site from what was there before.
Well, that sentence is very reassuring, that post-development and pre-development runoff.
Okay, I think I got you. Okay, so I'll step away for Jordan here.
Yeah, so again, my name's Jordan, obviously not Andrea. We're part of the Appsgren team. I'm representing Fitch-Irritt Corporation. We develop affordable housing all throughout the southeast, all the way from Virginia, North and South Carolina, Georgia, Dippenar Tonne, Kentucky, and just trying to expand our mission and what we do. We don't do market rate. We strictly do affordable. This is what we do. Coming to Buncombe County has been on our list for a while now, but as the beloved Asheville folks, I think they probably would have loved to hear this, but it's very hard to find land. And we've been, we've been looking for a while, and something that's affordable as well for our developments, because they tend to be pretty tight as far as the budget is concerned. So we were really excited when we got this one in Woodfin. And one thing I wanted to address, Mayor, you were talking about, who kind of regulates this? How do you, how do you know you're affordable? So the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, we are heavily monitored on all of that. They have to go through all those approvals, and we have to play, pay compliance monitoring fees in order to make sure that our, our. fees in order to make sure that our development meets all our targeting. So we're targeting 30% AMI, 60% AMI, and 80% AMI. And the average of all those will be at or below 60% AMI, as you said in that, in that language there. So overall, like I said, 120 units. And we, again, the building itself, the elevation, we're looking to kind of like blend with the environment. We're not trying to build something super modern, super different. We want to fit into the neighborhood. And all landscaping and everything will be, everything native to western Carolina to make sure we fit into the town and what your guys and our vision is.
Okay, questions of the developer rep?
I have a, this isn't really a fair question, but I'm going to kind of use you to educate myself a little bit.
Please do.
One of the things that I'm starting to focus on, we don't really have heat islands, as you would consider like an urban environment, but it's never a bad idea to think about cool roofs, cool pavements. I don't know what those add as components or subtract components to the cost of building. So I just, I wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I don't, I don't think it's also something we've totally dove into yet, but we also, in these developments, we also do all Energy Star green building certifications. We have to. So there's a whole nother standards that come with that as well. The units are tested, and we have, our appliances have to meet certain Energy Star ratings in order to go into the building as well. So happy, happy to look into that as well, but yeah.
Of course, it's not, not a condition of anything. I just want.
Understood. Yeah, no, that's a great point.
Other questions from council? Any concerns?
So there will be plantings as far as landscaping, trees native. What's minimum size? I mean, what, it's not that it's going to matter, but this is my edification. What, like, are you doing four-foot trees? Are you going to try to start at six foot? What's your model?
I, I think we'd be pretty open. I mean, I think we would probably do a combination of both. I think ultimately, whatever landscaping that meets your buffer requirements and that are going to.
Are typicals, what's typical in industry is two-inch caliber for, particularly for large maturity trees. You don't really want to go bigger than that because they have a higher mortality rate and maybe exponentially expensive. And, but you want some impact initially, so you don't necessarily want to do little tiny things either for a site like this. Now, if it were a steep slope, like a conservation restoration, then you might do small material, but a lot of, in this case, probably too much caliber. Which is usually about an eight to 12 foot.
I have another quick one. This might be more for Ricky. Is the, the amount of impermeable surface that we're going to have to the apartment, is that, is that fair game for some remedial stormwater management? I'm thinking of things like at New Belgium that Equinox put in place where you have swales that are deliberately designed to absorb water.
So like at New Belgium, they use more like lid, which is low impact. So that, that's one way of meeting stormwater requirement. In this case, they're actually doing an underground device that will actually detain more water and still clean it and treat it. Typically, your lid are one inch. So they'll be cleaning and retaining much more volume than that.
And to your point, the parking, so the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency actually dictates the minimum amount of parking we have to do for a family. This is targeting families because we have one, two, three, and four bedroom. So we have to do 1.75 spaces per unit. So hence, we have a lot of parking, but it's to allow for, for families to have adequate parking.
Good questions. Others, concerns? Anybody? All right. If there's no other question, we will open the public hearing at 6:55 PM. Getting new contacts this week, so I'll be able to see the clock better. Anyone sign up to speak, or anyone in the audience want to make a statement about this Okay. Seeing as there's sparse and there's none, we'll close this at 6:55 and a half. Close the public hearing. All right, if there are no further questions, is there a motion from council?
Just want to make one point first. So the, we switched to the conditional zoning process to be able to have a greater deal of flexibility, both in the projects that we review and also in our review of those projects. So this system allows us to have communications directly with the developer. It's not a quasi judicial system where we're prohibited from doing that. And so I encourage everybody to consider doing that. And if they're members of the public, the same goes for you. You can always contact us. Was happy to have spoken with the developer yesterday, and that is kind of the genesis of where that reduction to the 60% threshold came from. That is unheard of, I mean, literally unheard of. I don't know another example in Buncombe County where this has happened. So I think this is a huge, huge win for the town, and I'll be happy unless there are any other questions to, to make the motion.
Move away.
All right. I move to approve the conditional zoning of 7.48 acres, as shown on Exhibits A and B, from community shopping to community shopping to conditional zones, subject to the conditions identified in the Exhibit D project conditions and subject to the additional following condition.
Or subject to a change to.
Subject to one change, as noted in the new Condition Four regarding the blended 60% rate of area median income for the community. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, promotes a mix of housing types and affordability options by working with developers to incorporate income restricted housing in new developments; two, promotes long-term fiscal responsibility by growth in areas with existing services; three, supports walkable employment centers so that residents may both live and work in Woodfin. That's it. The end.
Good job. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Any further discussion, concerns that might warrant a condition? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise a hand, please. Thank you. That is six votes and no, thank you. Congratulations. We can't wait. How soon can you get started? Okay, wonderful. Okay, Ricky, let's keep going. We're going to have a public hearing after a presentation regarding expanding options for manufactured housing. Ordinance 2024-06, a request for text amendments to Chapter 54 of the Town and Woodfin Code of Ordinance to clarify and update definitions and development standards affecting manufactured housing, to create a new manufactured housing overlay district and a new manufactured home community district. And a second ordinance, 2024-07, which is a request to apply the manufactured housing overlay to specific areas of the town by rezoning is provided for under general statutes 160D-910E, specifically described as north side estates development along Riverside Drive, areas within the town limits west of the French Broad River and east of Albat Road, south of Farm Road to include areas along Gorman Bridge Road, but excluding Rock Springs and Crest Mountain subdivisions. Let's get to it.
And before Ricky starts, I want to first thank Ricky and Marie Vittex, who's our town planner, for their work on this. And I want to explain briefly why we're looking at this amendment. Before our current comprehensive plan was adopted, the town had goals for affordable housing. And the town's ethic, I think, and values has always centered around being an affordable place for people to live and work. So this is a big part of, I think, who Woodfin is and, you know, what makes us tick. Then the comprehensive plan, Woodfin Together was adopted just recently. That reinforced a number of these goals. Staff had already been researching into the subject of manufactured housing, had spent quite a lot of look on that. And then we heard from members of our community that they would like more and expanded options for manufactured housing. So that just added and made this immediate priority. So we decided to move it along. We were done with the research and, but there is a lot of information behind this. In the interest of brevity and time tonight, the presentation is relatively short, but there's a lot of background. So if you have any questions, I'm sure Ricky can probably answer them, but he's going to try to move through this fairly quickly. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to try to, because I could talk for hours on manufactured housing.
Really can.
I really can. I did say, I lived in one for several years myself, and I loved it. My wife loved it, too. So again, we got two items. The first is a text amendment to clarify and update definitions and standards affecting manufactured housing. So that's the first thing. We'll have to figure that out first. And then if you do adopt it, then we'll go through the creation of the new manufactured housing overlay district and the new manufactured home community district. Now, we're not going to apply the community district tonight. We're just going to look at that general overlay, the community we're going to park for another night after we do some more outreach. So currently in Woodfin, our current land use restrictions are, they basically exclude manufactured homes from certain zoning districts. Basically boils down to R10 and R7 is the only two that allow it. We impose a design requirement that's not required of single-family homes, red stick-built modular. Single-section homes are not permitted anywhere in town. And we've had some weird requirements for owner occupancy in some cases, which is kind of inconsistent about regulating occupancy tied to tenancy if you're owner or renter.
Will you define single-section home for us, please?
That would be typically a single-wide manufactured house.
Thank you.
And we've got some pictures coming here for you, too. So kind of our goals with this is to remove some barriers, provide more affordable housing throughout town, basically provide choice, expand where manufactured homes are allowed by right. We'll be updating the current zoning and land use regulations to be more clear and equitable. And it will make the process more simple for Marie and I to explain and approve when somebody comes in to seek one of these homes. So pictures, let's move forward here. So upper left, that same, what we're calling a multi-section home, or in this case, it's a double-wide, a Class A, typically has a masonry skirting, permanent foundation. Bottom two, the same double-wide with vinyl underpinning is a Class B, calls this not got the masonry, right? Bottom right is a single-section home, red single-wide, that may or may not have vinyl or brick underpinning there. So Class B, that's the bottom two, Class A. Upper right, that's kind of people think of trailers, trailer parks, that's that upper-right Class C. So we're defining these three classes moving forward. Is there any question about that? Because it's kind of important to know, and when you jump back forth between the A and the B, and both of them are double wides, that can be confusing. Just remember, masonry under, masonry skirting for Class A.
So yeah, Class A is masonry skirting and is multi-sectional. Class B can be multi or single, but it's got the, the other basically vinyl.
Skirting, non-masonry.
Yeah. And the Class C is the pre-hud trailer.
Yeah, pre-hud.
So that's some of those older trailers that you see.
We'll keep trucking here. So text amendment, create two new zoning districts specific to the manufactured housing. That's the MHO that we will try to apply tonight, and then the MHC, the community. We'll, we'll basically be expanding opportunities for Class B homes in the MHO. And we're going to be limiting by right land uses in the MHC district to manufactured housing parks. And I'll show you where those are at here in a minute. And then we're going to update definitions related to the manufactured homes. So that's the text amendment tonight. That's in a nutshell. Yes, yes.
You're saying expand opportunities for Class B homes. What about Class A homes, or is that already permitted?
We're, we're going to expand the option for Class A as well, but that's more notable about Class B because we've categorically excluded them completely from the town. You cannot have a single-wide at all or a double-wide. So we're going to provide another option for people, especially that Class B. And then under the MAP Amendment, we're going to apply the MHO to specific areas in town, which is, is the Exhibit A in your packet, where the existing development pattern is defined by manufactured housing on individual lots. That's the key thing, individual lots, it's not a park. And then, like I said, the application of that manufactured housing community, some people call manufactured home parks or trailer parks, however you want to call that vernacular, we'll consider that at a later date, so not tonight. So manufactured housing is kind of changing, it's changing fast. I mean, it's changed in my 25 years in government, it's changed really fast. Past perception is that it was inferior quality compared to stick-built, that they weren't aesthetically appealing, they were less likely to appreciate, they had negative impact on surrounding property values. And current statewide practice right now is, design standards are not imposed on one and two single-family dwellings. So if you build a stick-built house or buy a modular, you can have metal siding. It can be stark white. It can be on a pylon foundation. Modular homes are classified as single-family. And then the current statutes allow for stricter regulation of manufactured housing, creating inequity. So we're, we've got basically two different types of approved housing product that we're really scrutinizing that's manufactured, and it's a lot more cost-effective than what's under stick-built housing. I mean, we're here in, what, 450 is affordable now?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So you're the third client of mine that's wrestling with how to protect manufactured housing as another option, just to keep the wide range of housing types. And then I think everybody's comprehensive plans talk about trying to preserve a wide range so that people of different means can find something. I have been meaning forever to look into, at the end of my sort of prior professional career, doing a lot of real estate work, found that toward the end of it, there was no lending available. Because Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac had, had, had like, the standards for lending on manufactured homes had gotten, essentially couldn't get a general regular sort of commercial loan for them. Does that all, no, is that?
We, we haven't really got into much about deep into the financing part. I think the biggest thing what we're trying to do is get an arbitrary government regulation of out of the way of somebody's housing option, because sometimes people will bring a single-wide onto family land, and they maybe would be renting otherwise. They could be on, but like you said, typically you got to have that masonry foundation, and that's why you see a lot of the double-wide homes, let's call them, with a masonry foundation, they typically get financed more like a stick-built home. So you, they kind of will appreciate some, but they're financed like a 30-year conventional mortgage. But yeah.
So I get if you're trying to fix the exclusionary zoning practices, let's keep these out of here or just don't have them at all. There are more hurdles.
Yes.
I just want to bring, they are not ours to have.
And Ricky, the rationale for excluding Class B in the past, is this first part of your, the current slide?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, and a lot of times, like Shannon said, you know, there was a lot of movement back 25, 30 years ago, people moved 1970 trailers. I, I've permitted those from 1971. We're not seeing that movement anymore. Like, we're seeing stuff as a lot more, much younger in age that's moving around, being purchased. So I'll keep moving here. So Exhibit A, keep talking about, so on the left-hand side, this is one area just north of MSD, kind of across from the county's training center, the old landfill, Hogan View, Bannister, Crowfoot. That's a predominantly manufactured housing community. I mean, we rode out there this week. Almost every lot in there had a, a single-section or multi-section home on it. I think we may have seen one stick-built home, maybe, out there, why we chose that area. Then the right-hand side, a larger area, as was described, west of the river, east of Albat, is the west, basically west river, we call it. There's a number of individual, single and double-wide homes out there. We have seen a map with the tax codes, and it's not a consistent solid C of manufactured housing, but it is a much higher percentage of the housing stock is that character. There's not way of much of, I'd say, a conventional mobile home park. These are basically one house, maybe two in a couple cases, but almost exclusively one single or double-wide home on an individual lot. And so it's just adding an option. We're not taking anything away out here. It's still R10, R43. We're just giving more choices to residents of that area. That's what we're doing with this.
And real quick, join them on FDIC's website. Fannie Mae does have multiple credit options. It describes credit scores, loans to value. You can even do a cash-out refi on an owner-occupied mobile home. So things have changed.
So I mentioned earlier, so R10 and R7, shown in orange and yellow on this map, is our current area that we allow a Class A home. So a double-wide or a permanent foundation can go in these areas. We're hoping to expand this into the R21, R43. can go in these areas. We're hoping to expand this into the R21, R43. We had proposed Mountain Village, but that district, I think we, since the planning board, I think we're recommending pull Mountain Village back out of this. So your ordinance tonight doesn't have Mountain Village. So if you read the planning board packet, just note that was pulled out. Those areas are kind of more rough in topography, anyway.
So this is an important part of the amendment.
Yeah.
Ricky, you're citing that in addition to applying the overlay, which gives you options for Class B, this text amendment, if supported by council, would now allow Class As in any residential district except Mountain Village. So those multi-sectional on the masonry foundation could go on any lot, assuming they need all the others.
Yeah. And keep in mind, too, if a private deed restrictions do not allow for manufactured housing, we don't overrule that. That's, again, the private community. The private community could restrict it, just like minimum house size in a private community. We don't have it.
So I think that, so the, so I think the distinction there is, that map that we're looking at right now is where
We are today.
Predominantly, Class B is allowed.
Class A today. Just Class A.
Sorry, I meant it goes backwards. So Class B is the one with the non-masonry foundation. Okay. And so then the change would be that Class B would be allowed in all of those? Or they're just already allowed in A?
Class B.
That's the only section where Class B would be allowed. Okay. All right. I'm clear now. Thanks.
All right. Try not to move too fast, but I'm also not trying to talk all night. I promise. So our, our future land use map that just got adopted here about past month or so, if you'll notice, the little gold nugget in there was, they had identified mobile home communities. And this is east of the river, but kind of the spine of this is I-26, 1923. So you can see our existing manufactured home parks are already defined on our land use map, and we will look at that later date. So just spoiler alert for later. So again, considerations about this, it brings our development standards into alignment with the North Carolina general statutes and guidelines with Department of Insurance about the use, especially like terms, foundation, skirting, clarifies where manufactured housing is permitted through the creation of new zoning districts and zoning map amendments. It expands the opportunity for Class A, multi-section, double-wide homes in most residential districts. Class B, multi-section, single-wide with the vinyl skirting are in the MHO, Exhibit A. And it requires public review and input of actions that may displace tenants of manufactured homes. That's in reference to a future manufactured home community zoning district when we get there.
And when I read this slide earlier, Class A, Class B doesn't mention masonry as the distinguishing feature between A and B. That still holds, right, even though it's not mentioned here?
Yeah, because that's the
This is the definition.
Yeah.
Again, this is for the overlay area.
Class B is the overlay area.
Class A is townwide?
Townwide in R7, R10, R21, R43.
That's true. Now, whether we change anything, right?
Right now, it's R7, R10.
R7, R10.
Yes, so you would expand the opportunity for Class As into 21 and 43.
Yeah. This is today, Class A, this is today's zoning areas.
Got it.
So basically, all, I would say, all of old, I call, kind of call, old Woodfin, like along Elk Mountain Road, this area is, has the preponderance that. So
And I should apologize, because Ricky and Marie had a slide that showed, like, here's where it's allowed today, here's where it'd be allowed tomorrow.
That's a very useful slide.
I asked them to take it out because we had too many slides. So, but you can imagine the R21, R43 would fill in a lot of those gaps. So it would significantly expand the opportunities for the Class A, fairly significantly. There isn't as much, there's, we have more R10 and R7, I think, than any other.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So your big areas of R21, remember Crystal Country, Old Marshall Highway, that's, that's a big R21 area. Now, again, like, not to pick on Reynolds Mountain, Jim, but our, the R21 up in there, it may be a moot point for that area because there's probably deed restrictions up there, and our show covenant.
A lot of our R21, R43 would have those commitments that would exclude them anyways.
Yeah. But there is an area just north, so if you look at that big area west of the river, Eric, I know you was asking, there's an area of R43 above the Duke Power substation that we've seen a couple months ago. There's an R43 area that totally excludes manufactured housing. There's several manufactured housing units up there that MHO will basically formalize, include them, and make them conforming uses up there.
Got it.
Not to, sorry to overexplain it, but I just
You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
All right, Ricky, you back up one slide.
Yes, sir.
Last bullet, maybe you're going to get to that.
About the public review.
Actions that may displace tenants of manufactured homes.
Yeah.
Could you just
Yeah. So I think our future goal, not to dive into the manufactured housing community, we hope to do some engagement with people that own, you know, these communities. But, you know, sometimes these become almost like equivalent to a parking lot in downtown where it's a placeholder use, and the tenants are subject to displacement. So we want to have a district that's kind of officially recognizes manufactured home communities as part of our, they use the term NOAA, right, Shannon, naturally occurring affordable housing stock. And we want to try to preserve what we have, because occasionally, communities find themselves in a battle when they're down to like that one or two last vestiges of the manufactured housing, and the park's leaving. That's where the people that are cleaning hotels, working in restaurants, or working in mechanic shops, that's because it's got so expensive, the community is fighting and arguing, trying to save those residents. And many times, these people, the residents, don't have an opportunity to voice concerns. So we want to try to give at least an opportunity. We may not be able to stop the conversion, because the property owner may just end the park. They could just shut it down. But we want to try to provide opportunity for the residents and those nonprofit partners to work to probably purchase the parks.
So there's two steps to this preservation, or what we hope would be preservation. The first is to create the manufactured housing community, general use zoning district. So the text amendment, if approved tonight, would create that zoning district. The second step would be to apply the zoning district. Now, we're not including that, you know, application yet. So the Exhibit A map's just dealing with the manufactured housing overlay. It doesn't deal with the manufactured housing community district, because we need to do more engagement of those property owners, and kind of let them know and, you know, see what, if there's any particular concerns, or what their plans are, that sort of thing. But that, can you go back to the slide that showed the future land use map?
Yeah.
So those are where our communities are today. So if we have cooperative property owners, or even if the town just, we didn't, and we were just going to do it anyway, we could rezone those areas to that manufactured housing community. And the only land use permitted in that zoning district is a manufactured housing park. So if somebody wanted to come in and do something different, they would have to rezone their property, and that would force them into that public hearing process.
Got you. For some reason, I was reading that something we're doing tonight would cause displacement, just the way
No, we're trying to prevent displacement.
We're trying.
We provide an opportunity, we kind of slow the process down, allow an opportunity for our conversation.
Great. So the public, that last bullet point about public review, that's for the MHC? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, to be discussed.
So
Yeah, it's
Half of that goal might be accomplished.
Yeah. We're just trying to, we're just trying to give a voice to some people that sometimes are marginalized in a process that are not property owners. So that's what we're trying to do. So with that, I'll say that we took this to the planning board of adjustments again, back two weeks ago on the marathon. The board did recommend the text amendment five to zero, so they did approve that. There was one member that had some concerns about the application of the overlay district. I kind of heard that maybe they were, there was some discussion, it was rattled about, maybe, should that be expanded to this side of the river? I don't know if I heard all the comments necessarily, but that's what was kind of mentioned in the meeting officially, if I heard right, Shannon. So hence the four to one approval. But that doesn't ever preclude the town from always, if this is successful, or we feel like there's a need to expand that overlay to other areas, we could, or if we find that, as time changes, zoning is a living document, and we could always shrink those areas if we needed to. So that's, hence those two different votes. And so I'll stop talking, and so you can open the public here or ask me questions.
Questions before we open the public hearing? Informational? All right. So we will open this public hearing at exactly 7:20 PM. Anyone here on the list, whether or not wants to speak about this? Please come to the microphone and tell us your name and where you live, please.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Andrea Golden. I'm your neighbor. I've come with my neighbors, Rosio and Jonathan, we're the chairs of the Emma Neighborhood Council. So we're your neighbors over in Emma. And we are so excited to see the work that Town of Woodfin is doing. When we saw the email yesterday that you all were discussing this tonight, our entire neighborhood broke out in applause. This is exactly the kind of change that we're looking to see in western North Carolina. And we work for a neighborhood-based nonprofit organization whose sole mission is to protect mobile home parks as permanently affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing. It's one of the last kinds of housing in our region that doesn't require a subsidy to keep it affordable. I live in a mobile home. My neighbors live in a mobile home. We have 300 members of our organization, Emma, who are all mobile home residents, who work together to propose supportive public policy to protect mobile home parks in our region. We're so encouraged to see you looking at what you're considering tonight and in your future conversations. The Emma Neighborhood Plan has named these very same adjustments to zoning, and we will be working with Buncombe County, starting the second half of this year. Hopefully, on a small area plan, we'll be able to discuss similar changes. I served on the Buncombe County Comprehensive Planning Committee, and we were so excited to contribute thoughts and ideas in exchange with Woodfin. And I did just want to mention, I think, through protecting mobile homes and mobile home parks, it gives communities like ours and organizations like ours the opportunity to then create innovative housing models. We were so excited to see Be Loved Here earlier, and we have a very similar community model, where we provide lending and technical assistance to tenants of mobile home parks, to purchase the land when it comes up for sale, and turn them into resident-owned communities. In the neighborhood, in the Emma Neighborhood, we've done this with four mobile home parks so far. We have 60 units of permanently protected affordable housing. We are so excited to see that you all are considering this. If there is anything else we can do to support, please let us know. Woodfin is so near and dear to our heart. That Gorman Bridge line is right between Emma and Woodfin. This would be a huge win for our community. It would give us a lot of hope for what's to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else present wants to speak? If not, we'll close this public hearing at 7:22 PM. Further questions, concerns that anybody wants to make to Ricky or get clarified before we entertain motions?
Well, thank you for staking around and for your comments. That's really, really helpful.
Is there a motion?
I just wanted to make one comment on the, Ricky, can you go to the review by other bodies slide? I heard the same thing as you, Ricky, on the, on the one concern about, what I specifically heard was, well, why on one side of the river and not the other? And I don't know that I heard that come, that question really get engaged with fully. I mean, for me, there's an obvious explanation or an obvious answer to that question, which is that we have such a tight housing stock or housing market on the west side, that, sorry, the east side, rather, that where there are water and sewer utilities in place, that developers are clamoring for that land at such a rate, that there is no doubt that we're going to get as much housing as we choose to permit on that side of the river. The housing stock is going to go up in that regard by natural economic forces. On the east side, I think there's a argument to make this change, if for no other reason than to increase the opportunities for the further development of housing in an area that, absent those utilities that are going to bring in institutional investors, can still generate new housing stock by the use of this flexibility with manufactured housing. So I think just from the standpoint of, we want to increase our housing stock, I think that's the answer as to why on one side and not the other. So I don't have that concern. And so I'm all in favor of this, and we'd be happy to make the motion whenever we're ready.
Anyone else? Excellent. All right, we will, we'll entertain a motion.
Yeah. So we've got two motions tonight, and probably, what, two separate votes, correct, Shannon? So we'll need to do the text one first.
Got you.
To create
We're ready.
Okay. I move to approve the proposed text amendment subject, yeah? I move to approve the proposed text amendments and find that it is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan, and meets development needs of the community and that the request, one, promotes an integrated mix of housing types and affordability options, discourages the displacement of existing residents, and protects existing affordable housing through regulatory tools. Two, balances the supply of land for housing and employment. Three, ensures Woodfin is a place where residents have opportunities to engage on community issues. Four, modernizes zoning districts to better align with the FLUM, Future Land Use Map, while using zoning tools to protect manufactured housing.
That's it.
Is there a second to the motion?
There is. I'll say it.
Mr. Khan? Further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise a hand, please. That is six, and there are no names. So that text amendment is approved. We're entertaining motions on the MAP amendment proposal.
I move to approve the proposed MAP amendment and find that it is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan, meets the development needs of the community, and that the request, one, promotes an integrated mix of housing types and affordability options, discourages the displacement of existing residents, and protects existing affordable housing through regulatory tools. Two, balances the supply of land for housing and employment. And three, utilizes zoning tools to protect manufactured housing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cohen. All in favor, raise a hand. That is six. Very good. Great job, Ricky. Thank you. And Shannon and the staff.
And I think that's it.
That's closed session.
Closed session.
Is, is there a motion to adjourn and go into executive session based on the reasons that are stated on the agenda? Do we need to read them?
Second item, yes, please.
There, to consult with our attorney, to, to preserve the attorney-client privilege between us and the public body, and it's regarding the amount of compensation, other material terms of employment contract, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, et cetera, of a town appointment. Is there a motion to adjourn and go into executive session based on that rationale?
So moved.
Second.
So moving, we have a second. All in favor, raise a hand. Thank you very much, members of the public. We're glad you came.